Okay, I think we're. Policies to reach a point where we feel that we can. We can take the time to see how our policies have not been reviewed for a long, long time. And I think today will help us set the pattern as to how we're going to go about reviewing policies. And I think I'm too close to this mic.
Is that joined down?
Reverberating? Yeah, okay, I can tell it, I am. Okay. We first start with the consideration of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda that need to be made? Has anybody noted anything?
I'd like to ask that we defer discussion of our collection policy to our board meeting when Mr. O'Connor can join us for the discussion. And it also gives us more time to consider the information that Ms. Schumacher brought out as this weekend, insofar as not further than usual.
Okay. All right, you know, we can certainly take a vote on that. We can't, as a work session, we can't make votes that are going to be covering information that we will, as an organization. But as far as the agenda, I would certainly think we could determine whether we want to make that change, so.
I agree with Mr. Edwards on that. At our February board meeting, we were given the assignment of reviewing policies one, two, and three, which ended with the Friends of the Library. The collection policy was not included in that.
But it was in the email that came out about this meeting.
On Wednesday night?
No. This, when I sent the email about this meeting over a week ago, it was about a week ago that I sent the email about the meeting and what we were going to discuss at this meeting. And so it's been out there for at least a week, based on that email, so.
I would like to vote, or not to vote, to encourage that we do. This is a work session, therefore I believe we can discuss the collection policy because we were notified and it is a discussion we're going to have. So I believe this is the time and place to do that.
Our March meeting was canceled, so the discussion was not done then. Then a work meeting was scheduled after that.
We had, okay, we canceled the March meeting because we had, I had gotten word from at least three people that they were not going to be there.
Correct.
And I, since then, heard from others that we're not going to be there. But the, at the February meeting, we talked about the fact that we knew we were going to have to do some work sessions. And this was an opportunity to begin those work sessions, since we, there wasn't a time, a timeframe that we could really call another meeting to take the place of the March meeting. But we certainly could work on that work session so that we could spend, at any of our regular meetings, we have so much other business, other than just this.
I don't have a problem with having a work session. I have a problem with what's on the agenda for the work session.
Well, we had an email sent out on Wednesday, April 3rd, that clearly indicated we were going to discuss confidentiality of library circulation records policy, customer service and safety policy, Friends of the Library policy, collection development policy. Barb also included a change log. The lawyer had been notified and.
Which is less than a week ago, April the 3rd.
Wednesday, April 3rd.
Right. When I was out of town.
Well, I, you know.
Yeah, I know, nobody could meet the week before that, so I accommodated my schedule and then.
Well, I still stand by the fact that this is a work session and that we can discuss
Any other discussion?
I also believe we should make the documents, since they are in fact public documents, available to the public, and ask staff to make copies for those present if they wish to have copies of what we're discussing.
I don't have a problem with them having copies of them here today. Again, I had spoken with Mr. Waters about it and explained, you know, we talked about the fact that, that when they are not policy yet, they're not something that we have even had a chance to talk with, talk about as a group, that it causes confusion when they get posted on the website.
That's why you put the term "draft" on them.
And we've done that, we've done that before.
I firmly believe that when a document is presented to us as a governing body, which we are, for discussion and consideration, at the same time it's provided to us, it should be provided to the public, because it is in fact a public body.
And we are representing our constituents.
Yes, we are representing our constituents, you're absolutely right.
We have lots of discussion about transparence, and we want to be fully transparent. And I believe I've heard you say that many times.
Yes.
That's being transparent. What are we talking about? What are we discussing? What are the specifics of the language? The public has the right to know that. They may not all agree with it. They might really champion it, believe it's the right thing. They have the opportunity to see what we're talking about.
I will go back and speak with Mr. Waters about it again. Again, we had spoken about it.
What you can legally do and restrict, and what's the right thing to restrict, maybe two different things.
But this is a discussion.
It is.
This is a discussion that people are free to sit and listen to and to stream. We're just working here and we all know, we all know that the.
Increased rapidness, is there some deadline you're trying to meet?
As far as the policies go, we need to, we need to get our policies in shape.
I don't disagree with that, but Waters is suddenly picking up the pace.
Because we have done our bylaws, we took care of as much of the items that we needed to do for the King and Queen, and now we're at a point where we're starting to work on the policies.
But I canceled.
It's not a race, it's, they're, when we're talking about four policies today, it's definitely not a race, because there's a whole lot more than four policies that we have to work on.
One of them has been added to the agenda, could take the entire meeting to discuss.
Well, we have three hours today, that's, you know, we have the time today to work on something like that, that we don't have during our regular board meetings, so. All right. Do we want to put to a vote changing the agenda? The change that has been, pardon?
Can we not?
We can vote if it's just working with our agenda. We're not, yeah, we're not making a policy change.
When we are assembled as a body at an advertised meeting, which we are, we can vote on anything that we can legally take, whether it's a work, we call it a work session or a race or meeting or what.
Actually, that's not the, that's not the word that I got. The word that I got when I talked to legal, again, was that a working session is for the work that you're, that we're working on, but the votes need to be taken at the actual meetings. So it's not that we're going to approve or disapprove anything here at this meeting today, we're going to have the time to discuss it. We might be at a point where we say we have a motion we would like to take to our regular board meeting, but that we don't vote on anything in a work session. So, again, this is strictly a vote right now to talk about our agenda for this particular meeting, okay?
Yeah, I don't really see the issue here. I mean, one of the board members is missing, but it doesn't mean that the board member doesn't have a chance to intervene or, you know, discuss what is going on in this meeting. It's only a piece of material that we're trying to develop more fully so that we can actually talk about it and vote upon it at a called meeting of the board. I just don't see what's going on here. What's the issue?
The issue is, I was not able to review this policy because when I left for Florida on April 2nd, I did not know we were going to be reviewing the collection policy. That came out on April the 3rd.
Correct.
That's my issue. Joe O'Connor, is he aware? Has he been able to review any of this? I mean, we wanted to go ahead with our last March meeting and it was like, well, nobody else could do that, so we delayed, and here we are, unprepared.
Again, things did come out ahead of time for this meeting, and Joe has been obviously included in on everything, and I did, again, I did speak with Joe, so it's not a matter of Joe not, you know, and the idea that this is a work session, this is a time that we can spend time actually talking about some of these things that at a regular board meeting, when we have people saying at noon, "I have to leave, I have to leave," and I understand that, but we, you know, we've got lots of other things that we need to discuss at our regular board meeting, other than just policies. And this, that's why this meeting is focused on policies. And we could have stayed with the three policies that we're talking about, we would have been done at 10 o'clock. You know, it's not, we need to, we need to delve into our policies and we've got to decide, and to be very honest, when we voted on this collection policy a year ago, and there was discussion after we voted on it, two or three times, and it, what was finally said was, "Let's give it a chance, let's give it a year." Well, we've given it a year. The collection policy's been in place for a year now, so it is time to review it. And this is a chance where we've got the, we've got the time that we can do it, so that's why, that's why it's on this agenda, so.
Well, I would also say that there are times when we've received material the day of the meeting, and we've been expected to vote on it, and we've received material the night before the meeting and we've been expected to vote on it, so receiving material on April 3rd, I think is plenty of time. When I'm on vacation with my grandkids, I still, I read my email, I still try to stay engaged as much as I can, though I may not want to, but I just think that we're just having a discussion, and I don't see anything wrong with having a discussion. That's what we're here for, this is a work session, so let's get to work, let's go.
Any other discussion? Yes, if you would like to, if you could print the copies of the items that we're going to be working on, yeah, that would be fine. We will take a vote on the agenda, to modify the agenda to take out the collection policy.
This is a motion from Mr. Edwards, right?
Yes. Is there a second to Mr. Edwards' motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? All right, in that case, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no.
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 Okay, I think the noes carry that, so we'll keep that in here. Again, this is strictly discussion today, it is not making any final decisions today, that will come at our regular board meeting. Okay. One of the things that I had, I worked some with Ellen this last month, we were talking about the formatting of policies, what do, what are policies, what pieces need to be included in policies. As I was going through our different policies, we have some policies that have regulations, we have some policies that don't have regulations, we have some policies that have procedures, some that don't have procedures, we have some that are written, not written in what really is a format for a policy, we have a whole menagerie of things. And so her suggestion was that we talk just briefly about, you know, what is the purpose of our policies? We as the board are responsible for the policies, period, end of story. We can get input from all over the place, it's not that we can't have input, but the bottom line is, the policies are our responsibility as a board. And so we need to make sure that what we are doing, what we have in as our policies are what we want for our libraries, so. So when we talk about the purpose and how they're used, I had done a little bit of research on what is an actual policy and what is a regulation, because that's where I really was coming into conflict, trying to decide, did we need regulations in our policies? And as I talked with Ellen, she indicated that she felt that there are times that regulations are really rules that are made to make people comply and behave in a certain manner. And she said, "There are times that we do need those regulations in there." But that the policies are the rules that are made by organizations to achieve their aims and goals. And so there's a different purpose to the different things, but I think, you know, we as a group need to determine whether we want to make sure every policy has regulations or whether just some of the policies that we have have regulations. We do want to include procedures, I think, on all of them. We took them out when we approved the library card, the way of acquiring the library card, when we passed that in January. We took them out and we took them out because the policies that we had in there did not match the policy, or not the policy, the procedures that we had in there did not match the policy. And so the recommendation from Dennis, when we were trying to get that passed, we needed that as part of what we needed for King and Queen. And so he said, "I think we need to take the policies out of here for now, you can put them back in when you've got policies and procedures that match." And so that's, I know that we did that in January, but I think that the parts and pieces that we need to be talking about when we're talking about our policies are, first of all, policy statements, and then we need to talk whether we need to include regulations, some of our things we do, like when we're talking about safety, it's important to have those things that are actual laws that need to be part of that. And then we need to make sure that we have the procedures that we follow at Pumonkey Regional Library to go into that with the policies. The organization, and if I'm looking at this, the formatting, we got a packet that we got yesterday from Tom, that is the formatting, a possible way of formatting our policies. And I don't know if anybody has had time to go through that. Yes, well, there are several, there are several pages to it, yeah, there are several pages to this. And thank you to staff for working on this, we appreciate this. What I'd like to see, as I went through, and then I'll give you my comments, and then anybody else is welcome to add their comments, is that for the table of contents, I'd like us to make it a dynamic table of contents where we can, you know, somebody can go down through, click on financial policies, and if they're looking at it online, it'll take them directly to the financial policies. And so that, you know, that is something that I'd like to see us do. Another thing, and these are, because this is formatting, you know, I think I can bring this, these kind of things up, I think that when we, when I look at the actual pages, it might be a good idea to make the margins a little bit wider, rather than, we've kind of narrowed the margins on the page that, some of these pages that we have. So I think we need to make them a little bit narrower so it's not quite so crowded on the page. And the third thing is with the, with the form, or the form that goes, the sample had the form that goes with the injury incident report, and I think the report itself looks good, it's not that, but again, I think we, if we can make it a little larger on the page, so that the writing's not quite so small. And I don't know when this was created, was this created so it could be entered online? Is that, or is this still going to be just handwritten?
So that was created so to be able to fax that information to our insurance carrier?
Right, but is it, what I'm saying is, can somebody enter the data on, you know, online or?
I think the issue with that is, when you're dealing with somebody, say a parent whose child was running around and fell on the skin of their knee, they're out on the floor wherever it happened, they're usually not particularly interested in trying to go somewhere to sit and to do that, so staff are filling it out for them live.
Okay, in that case, definitely then this needs to be a little larger, just, you know, the, you know, as we're creating it, and I don't think, I think it's a matter of, you know, because it was created in Excel, so I think if we do just widen some of the spaces on the form itself, I think that'll, that'll work.
Can I just make one comment?
Yeah.
I think that as we do these, this formatting, the templates and such, and documents, as we look forward, I think it's going to have to require working in tandem with the web development, so that this is all electronic forms to be filled out and such, dynamic material, hyperlinks throughout the document. So it's a, it really will be a kind of a two-pronged effort, the formatting and also really working on the website to get it current and to get it useful, so that people can easily find what they're looking for by hitting hyperlinks within the policies.
Any other comments about our template that we're looking at?
I just had one comment about the change log. I found the way that the change log was written here to be a bit more confusing. It just mentioned, you know, that something was amended, but not actually what the changes were, and I think it's important that we track what the actual changes are to the policies, not just that it was revised or, but what was actually changed in the document.
And why.
And why.
And why it was changed, okay. So that is, that's another good suggestion. I think it's a very, like I said, I appreciate it, I think it's a very good start. I think it's gonna, you know, it's gonna help, help us make these look a little bit more professional, when they're all formatted the same way, so I think that's good. Any other comments about the formatting? Okay. All right, and the change log was the last item on here that we had talked about. I think at that point, if there's no more discussion about the broad view about policies, I think we can move into working on reviewing of policies and the forms. And we'll start with the, I think the process for review needs to be going through, as we go through a policy, that we read through it together, I know that I had asked you to use the initial change log that I had given you, that's just a chart, is all it is, out of Word, and that, then we can go from that to, into the detail on each of these policies that we want to look at today, okay? And then the policies that we're going to review, and we're going to start, I think we need to start with the policy introduction, which is, just simply says, "The library policies are based on the ideas, principles, and values expressed in the documents listed below." And then we have five different documents that are listed there, and I did go through each of those documents, I hope you all had a chance to do that, too. Is there, do we have any input? Does anybody have anything that they want to add to this?
I would only add that the Pumonkey Regional Library Plan went through 2020, and I think that's something we're going to be working on, so we need to be mindful of the fact that we should have, keep in mind that we'll be forward-looking with the new plan, and these policies shouldn't really be based on an expired plan.
Right.
That ended in 2020, that we should keep, as we work on the long-range plan, which I know we're starting working on next week or something, just keep that in mind.
Okay.
In my previous work, we, whenever we had like a policy document or something like that, we always started it off with kind of mission, purpose, values, those kind of things. And I know we have, we have some of that underneath individual policies, but I feel that it would be appropriate if the mission statement that's found, for example, there's a mission statement found in the Pumonkey Regional Library Plan, it's also listed on the top of some of the policies, like programming and display, rather than having it listed with individual policies, it should be kind of pulled out and kind of front and center, if that's our mission, so it's easily findable as well for everyone. So I would think that would be appropriate on this introduction page as well.
On this page, yes, okay.
Mr. Shephley, the mission that's listed, for example, in that regional library plan, was that something that the board at some point in the past voted on and approved, and is that, was that just part of the plan, was that just part of that plan that that happened, or had that always been?
From memory, I believe that there was discussion prior to the approval of the plan, of the various pieces. But is kind of fairly normal, I would say, for a planning process, if you're looking, you know, if you're looking at things, again, trying to take a fresh look, oftentimes people do start with the mission statement before they move forward, so.
Okay, so you're talking about adding the mission statement, what else did you think ought to be part of that?
In the long-range plan, there are goals, there's mission statement, what services are provided, what the goals of the library are. Obviously, I don't think we're prepared to like talk about those at this session.
At this point, yeah.
But I would think if those are the things that we, you know, want to have, we should pull those front and center, rather than having them embedded in a document that.
Right, okay.
Sure.
Yeah.
The policies and long-range plan, mission statement, really are all things, they're different things, they're not the same, so I don't know that you want to be including your plan at the front of your policies. Policies are sort of guidance to how you do things, and a plan is more geared towards goals and objectives of what you're going to do in the timeframe that you're looking at it. The mission is overall, you know, enveloping for lots of different things, but I think maybe let's, I feel like that might be a bit of a crossing of wires for you as you get farther into the discussion.
They, I think where that is coming from is, as we've, as I've been reviewing through here, there are policies that have the mission. there are policies that have the mission statement at the beginning of, you know, that. So I think what Christie's just saying is rather than randomly putting them on some policies and not on other policies, maybe we could list the mission statement and the, the goals of the library at the beginning of our policies. And then from that point, you know, we would not put them in individual policies.
That's, I, I mean, I don't have a, I'm not questioning that, I don't believe, I'm just, that you kind of need, you kind of need the mission and goals before you start doing the rest of it, I think.
Right, right.
That's what we're saying.
It's more, I think, the fact that I mentioned objectives, which might be more long-range plan specific.
Typically, yes.
Yeah.
So. Not having duplication within the policies. I'm in favor of that, yes.
Yeah, me too. Any other discussion about putting the, the mission statement and our goals in the, at the introduction of our policies? It'd be introduction of our, our policy book. Okay. Is there any discussion on any of the other items that we, again, the idea that the library plan will be, a new library plan will be developed, so it's not, you know, this particular one is expired. So that definitely would need to be taken out. And our bylaws have just been revised, which is good to have those in there.
So I would like to just make a statement about the last two items on that list, the Library Bill of Rights and Freedom to Read Statement and Libraries and American Value. And I think Mrs. Sloan pointed this out in our February meeting. Those documents as initially written were aspirational and had very good goals in them. Unfortunately, over time, those documents, their interpretation has been shifted, and they're no longer being used for the aspirational goals that they, they were before. So a lot of that has to do with where they come from, which is the American Library Association and the ALA, which has decided to waver from being neutral within libraries and has decided to take very strong political and social positions. And so I think we need to be very aware as we're reviewing the policy about those things. And we are responsible for making decisions for our community. And we need to do what's right in the eyes of our community, not an organization that's based in Chicago that wants to determine what's best for our community. We need to be doing that, and that's what we've been appointed to do.
Other comments?
Yeah, so Christie, I agree with what you said, is what's the action you're, like, do we need to look at taking it out? Is that, or what is your suggestion?
As I said, if you read those documents in and of themselves, there's nothing that I disagree with in them.
Right.
What I do disagree with is the way that they're interpreted. So for example, the ALA uses this to say that it's age discrimination to put boundaries in place for minor children as far as what they can read. And I would firmly disagree with that. That's, adults have done that for generations of children. And so, but they use that to, they use that in order to try and allow children to have access to sexually explicit material.
Oh, I got you.
So personally, I would be fine with removing those documents from the policy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, why can't we say that they're okay? I think we should read those documents carefully before we come to that conclusion. I mean, if there's things in those documents that we feel are countered to some of the things that we feel our community is telling us to do, then I think that we have a, a, a purpose to change that or alter that or edit that in a way that makes them useful to us. I agree with Christie, when I read them, I, I think that originally they did have, they, they read well. But today their interpretation is certainly skewed.
And I agree with that too. I, I agree with the fact that I think these are very, I, I agree with what is in them from the content is, but not the interpretation, how they're being interpreted at this point.
So the, the action out of this for the board is to re, reread and review these prior to the next meeting? Is that pages forty-six through fifty?
Well, may I make one comment? Once again, it's, the documents in and of themselves are, are, are good. However, it's the interpretation and implementation that are in need of review as we do our due diligence. And it just, you know, pulling quotes off of the ALA page, that they are, their goals are to help everyone in society struggling with maldistribution of wealth. The ALA needs to publicly side with labor and educated people about union organizing. Build collective power. Collective power is through here a lot. Prepare libraries for climate change. Ensuring collections are diverse. Hiring lawyers to do that. None of that was in these policies. And I'd like to go back to the original policy and I would like to veer away from the hijacking of the policies to, to support the narrative of the leadership of the ALA. That is not what we're about. The original aim of the ALA was to enable librarians to do their present work more easily and at less expense. That, maldistribution of wealth, unions, climate change, that is not what we're about. That's not what we're here for. So I'd like to keep that in mind when we read the, the Bill of Rights, the Freedom to Read, and American Values, and just keep those as written in mind and not the implementation and interpretation that is, and this is just a, I mean, it took me three seconds to find those quotes and those missions on the ALA website. And if we stay true to the, the spirit in which these were written, then we are, I think we're heading on the right track. But if we allow ourselves to be pulled into the, the new narrative, and it is a new narrative and a new implementation, then I think we are, we're, we're veering way off course and we're not doing our job.
Any other comments, questions? So I think, Ryan, I think you're right. I think what we need to do is we need to, by our next meeting, everybody needs to go back and read these again. And read them from the, and again, I've read them, I know others have read them too. The documents themselves are very well done, they really are. It's using them to create a different slant that concerns me. So I think that we need, before we make any kind of recommendation to pull them out or something like that, I think we need to really think through what they say and how we as Pumonkey Regional Library want to use these, so.
Well, and it also says in that first sentence, the library policies are based on these ideas, principles, and values. So we need to make sure that when we're looking at policies, we make sure that we agree with what has been pulled out. And that it, it's true to these documents, not necessarily, as you referred to, veering off into other areas.
Other questions, comments about this? At this point then, we will look at the fact that the plan is expired and that we need to obviously refer to the new plan in this. And then the task for everyone is to go back and read these carefully. And then we can discuss this further at the, at our meeting. Hopefully at that point, we can come to a consensus on what we want to do with this. I think we're, I think we're in good shape with this. I'm not, I'm not pushing to make major changes to our introduction other than to add the mission, mission statement and goals to this. Am I stating that correctly based on what the discussion's been?
Yeah.
Everybody agree with that?
I do.
Okay. All right, in that case, I think we can move on to the first of our policies. And again, thinking in terms of our, our formatting that we'll use with these and thinking in terms of what the parts and pieces that we would like to see in our, in our policies. Let's take a look at the confidentiality of library circulation records policy. And I'll open it up for discussion on this policy.
Can you clarify which one we're looking at?
Okay, it's, it's.
I'm trying to find the right email.
Okay, it's under, it's under general in the, online.
Okay.
Okay. And it'll be the next policy right there.
Thank you, got it.
Got it. Before we do that, before we do that, let's talk, talk a little bit about organization. I took one, I took a stab at organization, but that is, all this is, is a stab at the organization. I had sent this out to you all as a possible way to organize our, our policies. The, that, we, what we would like, I think our ultimate goal is at the time, by the time we are done with a review of all the policies, that we will have a way to create a policy notebook that people can refer to. It, it won't be, you know, separate lists and, and of course, if we have them all formatted the same way, that will help too. I will tell you that as I did a deep dive into some of these policies, I realized that I already have a change that I would suggest to this possible organization. And it's, it's a simple change, it's not anything. But under general items, and what I tried to do when I did this, is the general items are things that are kind of overarching for the, you know, buildings and safety and that kind of thing for all the, the library things. The collections and programs is talking strictly about how do we go about making sure we have what our constituency would like to have in our libraries and how they go about getting those items. And then the third one on, under the first part of the policies is the computer and internet services. And tried to break out, out those so that, I think this is going to be an area where as we move down in the future, this area's going to grow, that, you know, because they're, we're, we're going to have a lot, we're, we're already at that point where we have a lot more online than we used to. Then the next section I put was personnel policies, which really need to be formatted as policies. They're not really formatted as policies right now. And it indicates that there are some forms that go with that too. The financial policies, I know that John had already talked about at the last financial committee meeting. We talked about having some of these reviewed by the auditing company. And I, I don't know if there are others that need to be reviewed there. And then the safety and motor vehicle policies, number one, need to be formatted as policies. Number two, as we're going through these things, I hope that staff, that you all are willing to help us because you guys are the ones who are in the trenches, you know what's going on in the trenches. And, you know, we, we're, the board is ultimately responsible for the policies, but we need your input. We need information from you all as to, you know, when we get into these, if there's something that, that you see that's not the way it's done anymore or whatever, we need you, we need your input on those. The, one small change that I had come up with is under general, I realized as I was doing the customer service and safety, it mentions immediately that if there's an issue that the person would, the librarian would need to look at the revocation or denial of library services. And I thought, you know, that needs to be next, that needs to be the next thing in the list so that they're not flipping through the book trying to find where that is, that the policy would be right there. And so my suggestion would just be to move that up under customer service and safety. And I think that's the kind of things that, that hopefully will come up as we're reviewing these, that we begin to see that, like I said, this was the first stab at, at organization, just trying to figure out how we can start organizing these, so.
In the documents that we got from staff with the template, there was also a table of contents. Was that an attempt to also do this kind of organization of policies? Or had you, I don't know who did it, so I was just curious.
I think it was just to do the formatting.
Okay, or was it just to show formatting? Was that the purpose of it?
I don't know the document you're referring to.
I, I believe it's an offer at organization.
It's an offer at organization as well? That's what I was, I didn't print it out, but.
I've got them all printed out, I didn't. One second, I'm looking. That's just the, you know, that's the final. Okay, I don't see it on here. Yeah, maybe you can pull it up online, I must have missed printing that one. Oh, here it is.
Yeah, I printed it.
Yeah, I had it. Okay.
Okay, I mean, it's pretty much in one, like this.
Yeah.
This is just a suggestion of how to lay it out with the different policies and.
Right, right.
So it's not, I think you could combine the two that you've suggested.
Yeah, I think so too. This was, again, this was more organizational than trying to come up with policy numbers and, you know, that kind of thing. Just kind of, how can we begin to organize them so people can find things?
One question that certainly comes to my mind is, you know, I've heard doing a notebook, which leads me to think of something that is fairly static. And I've heard having one on the web, like wow, I really, there should be, there should be one method to do that.
Well, I think we could do a notebook that's like this, that you can, you know, as things change, you pull one out, you put a new one in, you know, type thing. And the only reason I think that it would be good to have this too is that then you can have a hard copy in each of the libraries that, you know, people can go in and say, oh, you know, I, you know, a librarian can say, let me show you the policy right here, you know, in, in the, in the book. But I agree, I think online, I think they definitely need to be online and it needs to be, like I said, a dynamic table of contents.
If I may, if I speak out of turn, please let me know. But if they are kept up to date online, staff would be able to print them from online. Having notebooks in the branches just leads to perhaps confusion if we aren't able to get them updated quickly when the updates are made online. It's a sort of a redundancy that would not be necessary.
If, and again, that's what I'm looking for, I'm looking for your input on that kind of stuff, yeah.
I would, I would agree with you completely.
Yeah.
Because I believe that the future is online.
Yeah.
And I, I don't think that, I, I think that we would be opening ourselves up to massive confusion because the book will get set aside and the policies will change online.
It won't get, yeah, it won't get updated.
So I really, I really believe that the, the first line of information is going to be on the web. And it's going to be, we're going to have to lean a lot harder on our web team or create a web team that is up to date with this. This is, because this is where the future's going. I mean, you're absolutely right.
Good suggestion, okay, thank you. And I'm, like I said, I'm not locked into any of this, you know, so I, we, we need to make it so it's usable for, for our libraries and for our patrons, so I'm fine with that. Okay, so, you know, we, as we build on this, and again, we can, this can be rearranged, that's why I said it's a possible organization of our policies. But it gets, gives us someplace to start on where we're, how we're organizing them. Okay, so let's do, go and, and move into the first policy that we talked about reviewing. And we talked about doing the confidentiality of library circulation records. And I'm gonna open it up for discussion about this particular policy.
Would it be possible to hear from staff if they've identified anything within this? Would it be possible to hear from staff if they've identified anything within this policy that they feel needs to be changed, or no longer is in line with the way things I, I just have one quick comment. The preamble here about the FOIA just indicates that, just correct me if I'm wrong, that library records, circular, circulation records are not FOIA-able? Is that correct?
So, everything goes up into the public in Virginia, except for things that are specifically excluded in the code of Virginia. And library user record information that connects the user to what they borrow is what is excluded.
Okay. That, that's what I thought, and I just wanted to double check. I just had a question in the procedure, number three, it mentions that this must be reported immediately to director or supervising librarian. Does that role of supervising librarian still exist?
Well, it is still a position, we don't have anyone that is calling that.
Okay. So where, where in the organizational structure is a supervising librarian?
It would be underneath deputy director, if we were to use it again.
Okay.
It was an existing position. We didn't, we didn't really take an action to say, oh, we're never going to have that again, because it's hard to pretend.
Okay, but you haven't had one since the deputy director role was formed?
No, it looked on after that. But, and I guess for those, there should be deputy directors.
Okay. So that would be a change that should be made to, to make that updated?
Yeah.
I have a question under regulations, item number one, library personnel shall not reveal any personal data on library users or allow access to such records or files. I would end it there. Because, does the director have the power to release that information? Doesn't seem like, it just seems like library personnel shall not reveal any personal data on library users or allow access to such records or files, period. So I, I'm suggesting we delete without the approval of the director.
Would you, you're under regulations?
Regulations is number one. Because the next thing says that any request or form of judicial process has to be referred to the library director.
So, right, we have 120 staff, they're not, they're not as familiar with the code of Virginia and how privacy works, so we have basically blinded the staff and not to release anything.
Right, so that's why I'm just saying-
I'm, I'm considered the custodian of the records. And, and so it is possible, there are circumstances where I may contact a staff member for certain information.
Okay. Are those certain instances, the two below it? Or are there additional instances?
The two below, I would say are sort of more frequent ways that things come up, which, you know, has to, sometimes, you know, someone will come in, a spouse might come in and say, you know, I think my husband has this book, I'm not sure, or, you know, something like that. And of course, we don't provide the information for, for somebody else like that. There are times when we're working with law enforcement and it is in the library's interest to provide certain information.
Yeah, which is provided for in item number two.
Yeah, so, but again, I think, I think it needs to be referred, reinforcing referral to your library director, I think is the correct term.
In that case, if we look at the procedures, procedure number one says, library staff is allowed to relay information about library users and their use of the library from library circulation files or records only to the library user, or to the parent or legal guardians of the library user who is under the age of eighteen, which to me is, doesn't meet the regulation at all. I mean, it's saying, you know, we're saying in here that they can't reveal any personal data on library users without your permission, which I understand, but then we're saying here that they are allowed to release information.
I think that they're sort of, what is allowed and then what is, what are the, sort of like, what is accepted, the exception, I think are the two sides that we're looking
I think it's, I think, yes, maybe it's confusing, the way the procedure is written then, that it, it sounds as though it's counteract, counter to what we are saying in the regulations.
Well, I think that if the, if on the procedure side, if you want to keep the approval of the director in there, then it has to be either taken out completely and just put under procedure, that, that library staff must get the approval of the director in order to accomplish item number one under procedures. Or except in the case of their own personal record, or the, that of their child.
Anybody else have input about this?
I believe that there's a difference between the information that's presented in the regulation. Regulation is not direct staff to do something, whereas that's what the procedural part is for. So, you know, having that background in regulations is different than what we instruct our staff to do, and how to handle this because-
But it still doesn't match, is what I'm saying. We're saying here that library personnel shall not reveal any personal data, and here we're saying library staff is allowed to relay information.
So, but we're, we're talking about why they, why there are rules, I think, in the regulations part, you know, based in code. And, and yet, yes, we do regularly when, when the individual comes in to get their own information, you know, do I still have such and such a book, just add whatever it would be. And that is something that is, that's on the acceptable side, there's no prohibition from allowing that to be.
Then I think we need to reword this. So it says what you're saying, yeah, okay. I understand what you're saying, but this makes it sound as though here we're saying they can't reveal anything, and here we're saying they're allowed to relay information about library users. I, you know, I just, I think that that needs to be reworded. So what you're saying is, and the procedure, they're allowed to relay information if it's that person's information.
Or their-
Or their child's information. Okay, here it says upon request, yes, parents and legal guardians may have access to the records of their children under eighteen. So that, yeah, we need to reword this one, so that's what this one says, so it doesn't sound like we're saying, you can't, you know, can't have any access, but here we'll allow
Okay, so I'm confused. What do we, what do we do?
Okay, and I haven't rewritten it, I'm just saying-
Okay, so are we gonna rewrite, are we gonna red, are we gonna delete any of these and just kind of blend them together?
No, we'll, we'll keep, we'll keep the regulations, because those are rules, those are, those are actual rules. But under the procedures, we need to reword number one, so that it specifically says that the library staff is allowed to relay information to an individual user about their personal information.
Well, it says, it says, but it, it says that, or records only to the library user, or the parents of legal guardians of the library user who is under the age of eighteen. So it does cover that.
Yeah, but it needs, it, it, it covers it, but it needs reworded.
Okay.
The way it's worded right now, it sounds like they have permission to, to relay information about library users.
Okay.
So, you know-
Oh, yeah, also like-
See what I'm saying?
What about just adding the word only, library staff is only allowed to relay information?
In the second sentence, it says, only to the library user or to parents and legal guardians. I think, I think only is probably needing to apply to, to user or parents of, not related to staff.
I, I think we could even add, library staff is only allowed to relay information about individual, about an individual library users', users' data and their use of the library to that, somehow or another, it needs to say to that person, about that person, to that person.
Relate information. Take, you're taking, you want to take out just that blanket about library users and their use of library? Because you want to, you want it to say that they're allowed to relay information only to the library user, or the parents of legal guardians of the library user.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Right.
It's allowed to relay information.
Okay, so maybe if we took out the users and their use of the library, and say, library staff is only allowed to relay information about library circulation files or records, and take out only here, to the library user, to an individual library, to-
To the individual library user. Or to the parents or legal guardians of the library user who is under the age of eighteen.
Yeah, that would, that would cover it, yeah. Did you get that, Kristy? I hope you did, because I don't know that I got it. Okay.
Well, it was a combination of you and Barbara together, so. So I have, library staff is only allowed to relay information about library circulation and records to the individual library user, or to the parents or legal guardians of the library user who is under the age of eighteen.
Okay. And then number two, staff may relate, release this information only in person with proper verification identification of the requested provider, which is a good statement there.
Is that defined, what's proper identification?
Um, yeah, we don't, well, no, we don't have, we, we haven't defined that, that's, that's a question. Should we define that?
Well, that would be-
My assumption would be it would be a driver's license, or a-
A government issued- I mean, driver's license. Visa, not visa, what's the, what, what is the, passport?
Passport, yeah.
So, proper verification of identification, and then maybe just in parentheses, valid, What else is a valid? Well, does a library card count?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, what about a library card?
Problem with the library card is there's no visual, you know, we don't have pictures on library cards, so. I think they need to add the library card, yes, but I-
I mean, what, what, how does that work practically?
I think, I mean, there's going to be a fair number of instances where library staff know the customer.
Know the people, yeah, yeah.
I guess, I mean, what I kind of am hearing in this is us now needing to ask a, you know, customer in their seventies who's been coming to a library for fifty years, that may have been somebody's neighbor, if they know who they are, or requiring us produce their ID, or is that personal knowledge to the person is acceptable verification?
Well, I think in a policy, we have to put down a blanket expectation, and in reality and implementation, I think that the library staff uses their discretion, because you're not going to shake down, you know, seventy-five-year-old customers coming for forty years, I mean. So, I, I, I mean, I just think this-
Have to hear the discretion part.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that this is something that probably needs to be in the policy, but, you know.
Not to bring up any kind of, you know, simple example, but if you go to a store and want to buy a pack of cigarettes, you have to show an ID, right, no matter how many times you go in there and buy that pack of cigarettes.
That is, that's true.
If it's simple for them, then it should be simple for us.
But if you're going to enumerate the IDs, you're going to have to go beyond what you stated, driver's license and passport, if you would need other forms of identification. There are people who won't have either of those.
Right, right, so I, I mean, power bill, what is another?
You just said picture ID.
A picture ID.
A picture ID.
I would just say a picture ID, a valid picture ID.
Does that work, Mrs. Bradby, or? Driver, valid driver's license, passport, picture ID.
I mean, sometimes people are coming up to the desk, they don't have their library card, we're verifying with them with their address, they're telling us their address or phone number to verify their account information as well.
Once again, it's, I, I, I think that, you know, we, this needs to be in the policy, so that if we have to refer to it, if it's something gets challenged-
But these are the procedures, and that's the part that I'm having trouble with. The procedures are, are the instructions that we give staff.
Right.
And so I'm, I'm confused about why they need to be in the policy.
I think that, I think it's okay, because when you run into a situation where there is somebody trying to get records, for whatever reason, that's none of their business, that they will have to present some kind of identification purposes for the record. So I think it needs to be in there.
You do.
So we're back to the policy? Or you want both?
No, I meant, this, this is under procedure, I got, I got my, my headings crossed. Should we change supervising library to deputy director?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, we did that?
Yeah.
We did that? Okay, thank you.
How do we, sorry, how do we go back to two and allow discretion for the staff to, to their point, when they know somebody? I mean, you know, you have a regular customer, I don't think we need to have them run out to the car to get their driver's license.
And I think, I, I think that's, it's almost a bit-
There's got to be some level of discretion in that.
Yeah.
I mean-
Do we, but do we need to put it in?
To Bob's point, if you go out to eat, and they can tell you're fifty, sixty, seventy, and you order a beer, they don't always ask you for an ID, so.
No, they don't.
But they do at the grocery store.
Yes, they do.
But they do.
I mean, it's, it's absurd as it is, they do.
Right, that's what I'm saying, it's absurd as it is.
Yeah, and, because if you put in, if you put in a procedure, staff, staff discretion allowed, or something like that, that opens up interpretation too. I just say that this would only be, in my opinion, probably challenged in a very contentious scenario where somebody's trying to- this would only be, in my opinion, probably challenged in a very contentious scenario where somebody's trying to,
They're separated and they want information.
Just prove something, but then that goes down to the judicial process and such, which should be referred to the library director anyway.
Yeah.
So I, I think that before it got to the point where it was contentious and really a problem, it would already be in the library director's hands. And I think that we all understand that staff has a relationship with their patrons and that, um, the reality of day-to-day service may not always align directly with, you know, every single procedure down the line. But I think that we have to have it in here, um, to protect ourselves in these scenarios, um, so.
So we're gonna establish a policy and then we're gonna have in our minutes that we don't expect staff to always follow the policy?
No, we're, we're looking at procedures, we're, we're having a work session discussing the reality of the implementation of it.
We're looking at procedures. I understand, I just, if you're gonna, if you're gonna say they have to produce an ID, then they have to produce an ID.
Okay, well, then they have to produce an ID.
If they're not, if they don't have to produce an ID, I just.
You can bring up a, a scenario to counter, contradict anything we're talking about, but if, if we're coming down to it and we have to have a procedure, it has to be in there.
That's what I said.
That, that, it just has to be in there.
But you can't put it in there and then say we don't expect staff to follow the policy.
And what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, in the workshop, as we're discussing this.
Just move on. Right, I'm not gonna come in and every day, just look at all the driver's license.
Well, I'm just saying that, that we're having a workshop here to discuss the reality of things and,
Keep it simple.
Um, I think that we can all acknowledge what may or may not happen on any day of the week at the library. Would we vote that staff can do A, B, or C to, um, to obliterate this request or this procedure? No, but it has to be in there. A lot of the stuff is in procedures that thinks of, somebody might think on a day-to-day, uh, implementation is absurd, but it has to be there to protect, to protect the patrons and the staff, so.
I'm not disagreeing that it has to be there, but we can't say it has to be there and it's a message to the staff that they don't have to follow.
Discretion. Yeah, I, I, I get what you're saying.
You can't say, you have to get a driver's license, but it's your discretion. Either you have to do it or you don't.
No, we're having a discussion with a, a frank discussion with the staff of the reality of the day-to-day operations and, but I think when push comes to shove, which it might at some scenario, we will refer to this and say, okay, in this scenario, you know, it went south and did you, did you produce an ID? And so it's in there, you're supposed to. We can't, you know, we're not looking over staff's shoulder, nor should we be.
There are a lot of instances where staff are interacting with customers, renewing, um, their records or, hey, when is this, you know, when is this book due? So at that point, every time we had that interaction, staff's gonna have to ask them for their identification because we're accessing their, their records.
Yeah, that's what our policy says.
That's what our policy has said.
Has said. It's already said, it's always said that, we're just.
It's always been in there.
Then maybe our policy should say something different if our expectations.
No, it's always said that, we're just, we're just defining what a proper ID is, that's all we're doing.
That's right.
So is it, would it be appropriate to say in the absence of a valid library card? Cause that's what, how most business is done at the library, right, is with a library card?
I mean, a valid library card wouldn't particularly work if my wife brings my library card to the library.
True.
I mean, like, it's a lot of good discussion, but I think that the statement that we have, proper verification of identification of the requester, it, it, it isn't, it isn't defining an ID type to be used. It, it directs staff to make sure that they are identifying the Requester, whether it's Mrs. Smith, who is their kindergarten teacher, or their next-door neighbor or whatever. That's acceptable. If it's somebody they don't know, you know, we have multiple ways of trying to do that. You know, you, you say that you are, um, you know, Bill Smith and, um, staff, you know, asks, and, you know, and let me look you up and, and tell me your address, Mr. Smith. You know, they give enough information that we can identify that it is, um, you know, Mr. Smith on Main Street and not Mr. Smith on Third Avenue. I, I unders, I, I appreciate and understand, um, the, um, taking a look at this, you know, from all directions. I, I don't really recall any, um, conflicts with customers, myself, um, in, you know, almost fifteen years of being here. The real, honest to gosh, the real question comes with, um, a reason why law enforcement might be looking in to find out why they need to know Barb Young's information, library card, what, you know, whatever it might be. That usually, that's, that is a conversation that I have several times a year. I mean, we're not trying to, um, I'm gonna say, for, get into a fight with sheriff, sheriff's deputy, but I need to understand what they're looking for.
Is that usually more to provide address, telephone number, those kind of things because a card's been found, or?
Um, there's a variety of sort of reasons why. I mean, one, one of the questions that I'm normally asking is, do you think it would be best for you to get a subpoena for it so I can comply? Because that also provides them with custody, chain, chain of custody. We have been able to provide information that's been useful for investigations. Just having a little bit more background of, like, what are you looking for and why, you know? So.
What if you added, um, after proper verification of identification, just add, you know, phone number or address associated with the account, valid driver's license, passport, picture ID? Because in my, as a patron, I mean, that's how, when I go, they, they ask my address or my phone number. And, you know, they pop in, oh, yeah.
I, I, like, would that be like, you know, sort of for example?
Yeah, and just put that as the, just say phone or, yeah, for example, phone or address associated with the account, valid driver's license, passport, or picture ID. And that way, um, it doesn't put any undue extra work.
But can I say, when you put all of that in there, when DMV initiated putting in the real ID, it was a nightmare. It was a nightmare. I mean, you had, depending on what DMV you met, you needed three pieces of identification, the passport worked, the passport didn't work, your birth certificate.
Yeah, that's a thing.
Yeah, what, the more you say, the more you're tying in the policy.
Well, but this is just presenting. You're not saying all of those things you're saying.
Yeah.
No, one, just, just these are examples, not all of them.
Just as an example.
And that for example, that's a good point.
And, and ninety-nine point nine percent of the people are gonna give their phone number or address. And it'll be in the, it'll be in the system and it'll just be.
Does that pretty simplifying?
Yeah, just put for example.
Yeah, for example, just so they know what, what would be acceptable for them. And phone and address would be, I mean, that's an excellent point, Tom, I mean, just, yeah. So to recap, I have three suggested changes to the, uh, what's written there currently, all of them under procedure. The first is to rewrite the first procedure, library staff is only allowed to relay information about library circulation files or records to the individual library user or to the parents or legal guardians of the library user who is under the age of eighteen. The second one is staff may release this information only in person with proper verification of identification of the Requester provided. For example, the phone or e, address associated with the library user's account, driver's license, passport, or other picture ID. And then the last one is in point three, that the supervising librarian is changed to deputy director.
Any other changes, discussion with this one?
Sure.
Is that, uh, uh, yeah, I, I believe the code, um, is two point two dash three seven oh five point seven. Now.
Okay, two point two.
All of that is, yeah, is the same, three seven oh five point seven.
Good catch though.
Point seven, cool, okay, yeah, I see where you're talking about now, okay. Okay.
Are there any other comments from, from staff? Or do those changes seem appropriate?
Okay. All right, I think we can move on to the next policy. Okay, the next policy that we're gonna talk about is customer service and safety. Okay, um.
Could we again start by asking staff if they have any comments about this?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely, I, please, your input is what we need on this, so.
Go on page six.
Yeah. And this is a question, I, I'm not saying it needs to go either way, but I, I wonder if we should be saying in a policy statement that, um, make the library pleasant. I was thinking that the Pumonki Regional Library provide for a safe and successful visit to the library. Rather than saying a pleasant, safe, and successful.
I, I don't, I mean.
And I know it's, and, and that's why I'm saying, I'm not saying we should take it out, I'm just saying, I don't know if in a policy statement it should be something like that.
Seems pers, perfectly fine to me, but I, I mean, we strive to make our branches comfortable and welcoming and pleasant, as well as safe.
Is it still the case that there's always two library staff numbers in, in each branch when they're open?
We, we will not open the branch if we only have one staff member.
If you don't have two, okay.
So we will not change that policy statement, I don't have a problem with that, I just, I, I thought I'd bring it up.
What, um, I'm jumping down to four, how do we define children? Is that anyone under the age of eighteen? Is that, okay, so when I skip down to, uh, page eight, um, number five, when children or others who cannot be responsible for themselves, and it talks about all the guidelines, were those, that's sixteen, seventeen-year-olds that drive here, they're still considered like, these, we would still apply those things like they're, or how, I'm just asking general guidelines on how that, how that's viewed, cause I know a lot of kids come after school and stuff like that. So we would enforce these, it says if they are not, okay, it says cannot be responsible for themselves. I guess we're assuming that if they drove here that they are responsible.
As typically, yes, if they're older, when it's closing time, they will, they will leave.
Okay.
These are, it's younger.
Okay.
Those that maybe walk over, um, from apartments and things like that.
Right.
Doesn't happen very often.
I was gonna ask, how often does this happen where you have?
I would say since a lot of them carry cell phones now, they're contacting, um, their ride. I, I can't even think of, of a recent incident in the past few years, I had a handful when I was a manager.
I think, like, in years past, particularly like, uh, branches that are walkable, you know, school for one, I would say at the beginning of every school year, you might go through a period where, you know, somebody's not being picked up, not used to what the rules are, they learn what the rules are, you don't have a problem with them again. So, you know, I would, I would think maybe in the past, every year, but again, now, most children are probably in touch with their folks, whether it's their soul friend, their friends, et cetera. So I think that's what it is, kind of eliminated this as a general issue, I think.
Are there ever incidences where kids are just dropped off and librarians feel more like they're a babysitting service? Or does that not happen?
And we, we manage, uh, you know, folks in the, in buildings all of the time. I mean, we have lots of, of kids that are in and out, um, that are with other parents, um, using the library. Sometimes you have to have conversations with, with them about their behavior in the library. But that's just kind of normal course of business.
Okay, cause I, I had a patron specifically ask me if there was like an age where
Sure.
kids were allowed to come into the library by themselves, and as I looked through the policy, I was like, no, I don't see anything. But I didn't know if we felt at all that that was helpful to have some kind of age or grade, um, where they needed to be with a parent or guardian or a responsible adult?
I think it's really, it's really more behavioral based, you know, you can easily have twelve-year-olds that will misbehave and you also have twelve girls that are not gonna be on the radar, and they're walking in, they're sitting down, doing nothing. And honestly, I guess, we have some problem with behaviors in twenty-two or thirty-two-year-olds.
Their mom or dad come picking them up.
So in, um, the things that I noticed, again, were just the, the supervising librarian is mentioned again in point four and in point five, so that would be appropriate to change that to deputy director?
I think it would be appropriate to say that any place in these policies where it says supervising librarian can be changed to deputy director.
Yes, thank you, that's good.
Gotcha, okay, that's a good point. One of the things that I picked up on is, um, as I was reading through these, uh, number two, and I'm under procedures now, under safety. The second B said before a patron leaves, the premise is complete the Pumonki Regional Library incident report. And I had written down who completes this, and then I realized number four says who completes it. And I'm just thinking, maybe we ought to add that to, to be there. You know, just saying that it's completed by the supervisor librarian, just that, you know, as you're reading through it.
Is it the branch manager that?
I was gonna say, it, it could be a staff member.
A staff member.
Staff member, okay.
I have two comments.
Okay.
One is under customer service, page seven. Bullet three, it says, refer all inquiries which you cannot answer satisfy. To whom? Do you, I mean, who do you refer it to?
It's gonna depend who's available.
Would that?
But we have, like, we have librarians that work with some of the branches, so you might refer it to librarian, you might refer it to supervisor.
Okay, refer all inquiries which you cannot answer satisfy, isn't that, so, so this is speaking to library staff?
Under the procedures.
Right.
Under the procedures, I'm under, and it's refer all inquiries which you cannot answer satisfy to?
To who?
The approach of staff.
To who?
To who?
So that doesn't really need to be specified?
To someone else, okay, it just, just whoever, whoever might have the answer?
What we train our staff to do is to not just leave, you know, you come, you come in and you ask a question and they try to help you and they don't find you, then the library's perspective on that is, that doesn't mean that you're just, just done. You know, if it's something you're interested in, yes, we'll work to make sure that.
Oh, help you find who to go to, gotcha, okay. Gotcha, and, um, thank you. Under safety, number three, um, I would say that you should change facts to, and I don't know, is this a, I'm assuming. um, I would say that you should change fax to, and I don't know, is this a, I'm assuming this report will be electronic at some point, so it would be email or fax the report, or scan an email, I don't know if scanners are available? I just don't know, so scan an email or fax the report to the administrative office, and is that phone number still valid? Is that the appropriate phone number for a fax?
We can check that, but I have a question, a general question. With this level of detail that you're asking us to put into these procedures that are attached to the policies, if, say, in the future, there's a technology change that makes faxing, emailing, scanning, all of this obsolete, does this then have to come back to the board to make a decision on whether we can change something as simple as, as how a procedure is done in a branch at that level?
It, it, because these are, um, these are, are, are responsibility, yes, it does, and that's the whole purpose to having the change log. And it, it, it could be as simple as coming to the board meeting and saying, we'd like to have these changes made, and if you documented why, then it's like, yes.
I, I can understand it for the policies, I'm just still struggling with this level of involvement at the procedure level. This is us instructing our staff.
Well, I understand your concern, but I think that the onus is on all of us to keep these current and correct. Because ultimately, this is all, we think, you know, five, ten years down the line, this is all gonna be electronic anyway, and people are gonna be referring to this, and right now, I mean, we can't verify that that number's correct, there's no email address, because chances are, any reports would be emailed instead of faxed, because faxing is kind of going away. So just, just, there has to be someplace where it is, it can be referred to and written, and, and. It can also be written in a way, though, that it doesn't need to be changed, such that, you know, forward this form to the deputy director who's in charge of your branch, or something like that, so, you know, it's not being changed every time. It, I mean, is that what happens, does it come to the deputy director who's overseeing that branch, or?
It comes to administration.
It comes to administration. Yeah, so it's sent to administration office, and it just. Immediately. Yeah, people just have to know where, where it's supposed to go, just which email address, which fax number. Just making sure that that's current, I think, is the important part.
But back to your question, it, in order to keep these, and not be at the point where we are now with a lot of these, where they, you know, they were done twenty years ago, and when they were done twenty years ago, they were, they were fine, the way that they were written, but there are some things that have changed since then. In order to keep things current and know that what we have online is the, the latest and the greatest, it, we, we have to have a process in place that if a change is made, again, it doesn't have to be, you know, a fifty minute discussion on it, it can be, you know, we make this recommendation that this get changed, and we can, you know, can be a, it can even be part of the consent agenda, if it's something that, you know, that basic. But it still needs to go through a process to, to make changes to them.
Can we rewrite number three to say send the report to the administrative office immediately? Is that, that way, if there are changes in how it gets there, that doesn't change?
So we just take out the telephone number there?
Yep.
Take out fax, yeah. Okay.
Well, if we take out fax and leave the telephone number, that's kind of a disconnect.
Or take out the telephone number.
No, we're gonna take out the, take out the phone number.
In point four, B and C, are those workflows in staff notebook, are those still the ways that are used to communicate information?
For the most part, yes, yeah.
Yeah, it's still the same programs, okay.
I noticed under number five, F, um, it says staff must verify the person picking up a child or another person is a parent or guardian, of course, this is where they're trying to get them out the door, you know, when they're still hanging around, but I, I wrote over here, do we do this for every minor? It's, it's just in the instance when you're, the kid is still sitting there at five o'clock and people are trying to go home.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, we, we give, so, I mean, if my mom's right around the corner, she got stuck in traffic, then likely the parent is going to be there before law enforcement would.
Yeah.
We give them some grace.
How, how do you verify the person is the parent or guardian? It just says staff must verify the person picking up a child, or other person is the parent or guardian, how, it says you must verify, how do you do that?
In general, if the child is, there's my mom, we accept that.
Yeah.
We may not ask for an ID.
And most of the time, they're embarrassed and don't want to wait for law enforcement to get there, if they've beat them there, they tend to just head out.
I think that's, I, I really worry about that in today's world, where children are extremely vulnerable. I think there should be a specific way of validating who that person is, with a driver's license and a picture ID. If I have to be that specific about picking up my child from the nursery in my church, I have to match a number, I'm given one and I have to match it to the number on my child. In today's world, I think with trafficking of children, this is a very, very important thing to do.
I don't disagree with your general point, Bob. About trafficking, obviously, that's a serious thing, but I, I, I think that, this is talking about a closing time. So if we're gonna verify who's picking up a kid at closing time, then when, why are we not verifying any other time of the day when a kid comes in and goes? I mean, I, I think that that gets very, very problematic, um, and is asking the staff to, to do things beyond their general.
Right.
If there's a child who was stolen.
Yeah, I mean, we're saying that, the, the, the very first thing says that we're not responsible for kids, in the, the opening of this, I, as much as I understand, and I'm, I, I side with your concern, I don't know how we, kids are gonna come and go, they're gonna come in in the morning, they're gonna come in, I mean, I, I don't know.
Well, that's an excellent point, I would say, though, then, to that point, if something were to happen badly, then this point would make staff liable, because it says staff must verify the person picking up a child.
I would say take it out.
So if we're not gonna verify them, we shouldn't.
Take it out.
You know, just say, it is understood that staff is not responsible for who picks up the child, because right now, the staff is supposed to verify.
Right.
It's not specified, but I think to, to protect the staff, it should say staff is not responsible for person picking up the child or other person, you know, it's.
Thoughts?
You might need to do a little more research about that.
I guess that's a legal question.
Yeah, I, I, I think you don't wanna put staff in a bad spot.
Because if, if they don't have to verify, I, they, they don't need to be liable for that nonsense, I mean, the people, yeah. So I think it's more protecting staff than.
But if, but in the same breath, if you let them knowingly get in the car with someone that you know is not there, you know, what, I, I do think that's, that's probably a legal question, that we need to make sure
It's, it's definitely a legal question.
our staff are not exposed to, to something.
I think, I think we need to have more information.
I agree.
I've got that down, I've got, I will do that, I will check with Ellen.
Ellen's actually right there.
I mean, is that a, is that a regular?
Come in.
No. Well, I mean, one of the, there are a couple, couple issues here, one is the question of the extent of liability that a policy creates on staff, that, that's, that's one big question. But I think this whole issue of the treatment of minors when they're within a public space is a, is a, is a, is an important legal question, and it would be, I mean, Mr. Shepley's indicating he wants to do a little more research. I can certainly support his efforts on that, because I think this is an important issue to look at, so. And of course, one thing I had mentioned to Tom earlier was, at the end of the day, if once you all gone through your process with looking at the policies and sort of shaping them and revising them, would not be a bad idea to have our office do a full formal review of it, so, and certainly, if I hear things as you're going along, that's a terrible idea, I can understand, they might wanna redirect a little bit, but at the end of the day, once you've done everything, I think it would be good just to, so that you can say, you know, our attorney has looked at this, and our attorney has, has approved it, so we'll be happy to make that final review, and I would anticipate, given that I expect to be involved in your discussions, that any comments we make would be tweets to, to what you, what you've already done, so, but I think, yeah, Tom, Tom and I can take a look at this question of, of the question of liability, and the question of oversight of minor children in a public space.
Alright, thank you. And I apologize, I didn't see he's back there. Okay. Any other questions or comments? And again, you know, there, there is a form that is with this, I think the form is fine, again, if we can make sure, this one, this one has got plenty of space for somebody to write, the, the one that was our sample just didn't, so. Any other?
Staff, you're happy with the form, the way it is?
Okay, I have a, just a really general question, and this might be ridiculous, but it says injury incident report part two, is there a part one? I, I don't, if there is, I don't have it.
Is part one the first box?
That first box is for an employee. I've written that down.
So where is part one?
Is it necessary to have the form and the policy?
No, in fact, I was gonna make the suggestion that we have a sec, separate place that we keep the forms, where they're not in the policy.
So is there a part one?
Still, still.
Is there a part one?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is, we can delete part two out of there and just say this is the report? Okay.
And the part that's up, that little, the box that's up at the top is really for an employee. You know, whether, they say I will or will not go to the physician at this time, I'm assuming, is that what an employee fills out if they have an incident?
Not nearly, yeah, previously, it was a form used for staff and for our customers, that were injured on site.
Do, do you have a, do you have a different one?
So this, this whole should be deleted?
Okay, so we could take that top part off of there, totally, okay.
So, in the policy, then, we would only refer to the name of the form, is that correct, but we wouldn't actually have the form within the policy?
If, yeah, if we make that decision to put the, put the forms in a separate place, but yes, refer to, you know, this is the form that you need to get.
Well, this would be a hyperlink in the document, and so people could jump to the form.
If it's, if it's electronic, if it's in, in the library and you're just trying to pull out a piece of paper, that, yeah, we would wanna have the forms available.
Well, it'll have. Oh, right.
So, okay.
So just to recap, the changes that we're suggesting are under procedure, safety point two B, is we add by a staff member at the end as the person who fills out the injury and incident report. Number two, we would like to rewrite under safety number three to send the report to the administrative office immediately. As Ms. Bradby said, anywhere in the document where we have supervising librarian, it will be changed to deputy director. And then Mr. Shepley and Ms. Boyer are gonna do some further research on the legal questions around the liability of staff and the treatment of minors in public spaces and their oversight. Okay.
Okay, and then on the form.
And the form, are we taking those out of the policy?
We're gonna, yeah, well, I, I don't know that we've made that, I mean, I'm, that was my, my idea too, I thought that that would be a good thing to take them out, but we haven't. I'm, I'm fine with that if everybody else is fine with that, but I don't wanna assume everybody is. Are you all okay with, everybody okay with that?
When the form section makes sense.
Right, okay.
Yes.
We'll do that, but on the form, we said we will take out that top paragraph.
Yeah.
Because they have a different form now.
Delete the top paragraph and take out part two.
Take out part two.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good. Any other comments on that particular policy? Okay, let's move to the next one, which is the Friends of the Library. And.
I, I just have a general comment about working on Friends of the Library. And that is, the Goochlin has a very active group, does Hanover have a group?
Hanover has four groups.
Four groups, okay, and King William, Friends of the Library?
Yes.
Two groups, yeah. Okay. We as board members are ex officio members of the Friends groups, and Barb and I go to our, the Goochlin group. And I'm just wondering, as a general comment, if it wouldn't be wise to reach out to each Friends group, send them this information and ask for their input before we start messing with it? Because I think that they are the experts in what is involved in a Friends group, they could offer good information, current information, and I just think that that would be very valuable input, so, I mean, we can sit here and talk all day about it, but we really need, in my opinion, their input. So I'm wondering what everybody feels about that.
I think, I, well, I had sent an email to ours, which, yeah, I have not heard anything back yet, but.
And, and we have a meeting next week with our Friends group.
Next week, that we could certainly bring it up at their meeting.
We'll send this out to everybody, and, I mean, I would just love to give the Friends groups an opportunity for their input before we start writing procedures, and policy and procedures, regulations and such.
And I think that you, you all have reached out.
So the Hanover members divided up the active Hanover groups. I know that Bob and I have had contact with our Friends groups, I don't know whether Ryan's had a chance to
I have no idea.
Reach out, or I haven't heard back from Joe either, but we did attempt to contact our Friends groups to be able to get input to these things, so.
Could, would you, could you, and, I don't know which, which groups you have been assigned to, would you?
So we just did it within ourselves, because we knew we were gonna be addressing this, so Bob had contact with the Atlee group, I had contact with the Montpelier group, Ryan was gonna contact Ashlyn, and Joe was gonna contact Mechanicsville. Those are the four, the four active groups, correct?
Ashley. If you gotta email Tom Wolfe, is that still right?
Tom Wolfe is no longer the president, it is now Sky Master, I can get her.
Could you give me that contact info? Thank you.
So, I guess what I'm saying is, I'd like to recommend that perhaps we defer a dive into the Friends of the Library until we've got what we can, you know, we've made our best faith effort to get their input, and then pool the comments and incorporate their suggestions into an update of this, the proceed, policy and procedures.
I think that's, I, I, again, we have not heard back from Goochlin yet, I did bring a copy.
Yeah, and, I mean, really make an effort and see if we can't get, and just maybe defer this to the next time we have the workshop on policies, because I think their input is vital.
The next time that, could you include King William, just to shoot just an email saying that you're doing something like that, so that we can also do that with our Friends group, or?
Sure.
Whatever the contact would be, so that we're in the loop.
Yeah, I had just, yeah, I have, I will be happy, in fact, I can forward this to you, yeah.
We had mentioned that, we had talked about it in the last meeting. Yeah, we did, we did talk about it.
We had talked about it in the last meeting, what we were planning to do for Hanover, so after that, I had contacted our Hanover people to divide that up.
And I had a delightful meeting with Betty.
So, and our, the Friends group.
She was effusive.
The Friends group that I contacted is only meeting on May tenth, so that's at the point where they would be able to look at the, the document.
And if it means that we hold that one off for a month or two, it's gonna, we're gonna be working on these for a while, so, yes, I think we could hold it off to the point that everybody's had a chance to, all the, the different Friends groups. I think we could hold it off to the point that everybody's had a chance to, all the, the different Friends groups have had a chance to look at this and to give us some input from them, so, okay.
Could I, just as we, like, move towards that, I'm just curious, I know, for example, the Atlee branch has said they no longer charge dues. Is that across the board that way or is that different from group to group? Okay.
I'd have to go back and look at the bylaws. I don't remember their, what...
That was just something that came up that I was curious if that had been gotten rid of.
They are all separate.
Different, okay.
Yeah, they do different things, different ways, so, okay. All right, is everybody comfortable with deferring that? I, I think that's, that's a good idea. Okay.
Can we take a, like, a five minute break?
Yes, I was just thinking the same thing. Let's, yeah, if we can make it, let's say ten minutes.
Not even, five minutes is plenty. I mean, just...
Well, for one person. For everybody. Let's say at five after, we will start back up, okay? So we are gonna take a ten minute break.
Come on, come on. All righty, I think we probably need to get started. And I just talked with Ellen, we could actually vote in a working session, but I think we'll leave it without voting today. Just simply because it's maybe something that we want to discuss when we get back in the, in our board meeting this next time. As to whether we want to do that format where if we do a working session, we also can do a vote. So I think it'd be cleaner if we just continue the route we're going today. So with that. Ellen also explained that anything, and I apologize to you about that, that anything that is a public document that we are using should be posted on the, on our website when we get ready to work on it. So we will do that from now on. All right, we are moving on, and I didn't put this back on, I guess I can do that. And the next thing that we're gonna talk about is the collection policy. And we have the collection policy that we had developed last year. We did say that we would do a review of it once we had the opportunity to have it in place for a year. And that in the meantime, we have the two documents that we received this last week. Policy for protecting children from harmful sexually explicit materials in areas designated for minors and the reconsideration of the library materials. As we look at those, we will then need to go back through and take a look at our current collection development policy. So that if, so that we are working all on the same page with all these things. So I think what I'd like to do, if it's okay with Hugh Christie, is I'd like to ask you to talk to us a little bit about these two documents. And then we will move forward. I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
So as I mentioned in the email that I sent to the board, over the last number of months, I've done some research about how other public libraries are handling this issue that we've seen come up again and again with sexually explicit material in areas available to minor children. And so the two proposal policies that I sent were based out of that research. The first is, as Barb already said, the policy for protecting children from harmful sexually explicit materials in areas designated for minors. And I don't know, has everyone had a chance to read these documents?
Yes.
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 Okay. I'll just read a couple of, well, I'm just gonna go ahead and read the beginning parts. It shall be the goal of the Pumunki Regional Library through its collections policy in areas designated for minors to meet the educational, informational, and recreational needs of the community, especially its children. In curating its collection in the children's and young adult sections to ensure that inappropriate materials are not placed there, the Pumunki Regional Library Board of Trustees has determined that while materials that depict sex acts or sexually explicit or graphic materials may be appropriate within adult sections of the library, placing or maintaining these materials within the children and young adult section is potentially harmful to minors. The goal of this policy is to ensure the appropriate placement of materials in library facilities. And this is a question that has come again and again before the board. What is the appropriate placement of materials? One of the challenges is to actually have a very specific set of, what do I wanna say? Guidelines or criteria for what exactly that means. And so the next section that defines sex act or sexual activity is very specific about what we're looking at. You know, I've had questions in the past where somebody has said, well, is French kissing considered sexually explicit? Well, under this, it's not, right? So this is a very specific criteria that would need to be looked at to see whether a book is age appropriate in that area. It then goes on to talk about the Children's Internet Protection Act, which is also something that is in our library policy already as it pertains to the internet and what's accessible within our libraries. So to improve the experience of children who visit the library and conform the entirety of the library's collection in the children's and young adult sections to age appropriate standards, including those outlined in the Children's Internet Protection Act. And then it goes on to pull some sections from the Internet Protection Act there as defined by CIPA. So I think that's kind of the general suggestion was to try and incorporate this into our collection policy. There are public libraries around the country that are trying to deal with this influx of material in minor areas, in sections of the library for minors. And so this was my attempt to present something that could be implemented here at the Pumunki Regional Library.
Okay, thank you.
That's the first piece. Do you want me to talk about the second?
We'll do the second. Let's do the first first. Have some discussion on that first. And I will open it up for discussion at this point. Do we have any comments, questions?
As with our other discussions, is it appropriate to hear from staff with their thoughts on this?
Oh, absolutely. That's why they're sitting here, yes.
The staff had an opportunity to review this briefly.
You came back to work yesterday morning to find it, I'm sure.
Yeah. I mean, I have sort of a few general questions to ensure that inappropriate materials. It seems like maybe we should define that. Maybe it's sort of implied that clarity would be provided better for policy. The, as you said, the difficulty in criteria or guidelines, I mean, sort of inappropriate materials are potentially harmful to minors. I don't know if there's a source for that statement as fat. Might be, might be helpful to tap it out as a citation if that's something that they're making a statement about. The middle section in terms of the definitions there, I haven't had the chance to see if those are defined in code Virginia. It might be useful if they are to be able to use things that are in fact sort of a law of mine. And then, then after the paragraph that defines CIPA, which is meant to apply to electronic, not print items, a little different standard, but in, in, in instructions to the library director. The middle section defines sex act or sexual activity. And those are not terms that are used in the instruction for the director. I feel like it would be more delineated if it were. So we're taking the time to define these, but remember, you're instructing me to do something different. And I mean, I think I would need to have definitions of what that means. I guess sort of the reference to French kissing, I don't know if that's to be considered sexual conduct. Do the instructions or not? Curious if perhaps flushing some of that out. Yeah, in the paragraph to improve the experience, it was on page one. It says children's and young adult sections. Is the intent that this applies to everything that is for minors, from seventeen and?
Yes, that's the, the title of the policy is for minors.
The, we might need to use some descriptive terms of use for the question.
Are you referring specifically to the, under the young adult policy, the age range that we currently have? Or what's the?
In the paragraph to improve, it says, conform the hierarchy of library's collection in the children's and young adult sections. I think children's might be a little better. Young adult is more specific, it's more of a collection code.
So are you saying juvenile would be more appropriately appropriated in that section?
I don't know that I have a suggestion for you, other than just trying to ask some questions.
Well, I mean, that's how it's defined in the current collection development policy. Is juvenile, young adult, and adult. I do have a question about the age though. In the current policy, young adult is thirteen to eighteen, which kind of doesn't make sense because as best I know, eighteen year old is considered an adult. So I think our young adult collection should be thirteen to seventeen. So that adult books are not put in that section because of the eighteen year old designation. Because they're legally adults.
I've always understood it to be two eighteen, eighteen and above is adult.
It says here on page, it's not numbered, on collection development policy, serve the needs of patrons aged thirteen to eighteen. So it should say thirteen to seventeen, in my opinion, it should be changed.
And you're looking at the actual policy.
I'm looking at the actual policy, and if the pages aren't numbered, but it would be under.
It's under page.
My page isn't numbered. I don't know, it's one, two, three, four.
Are we, are we discussing two policies that are?
I'm specifically just referring to the age since that, that came up. Yeah, that's, so that's something we'll go back to, but just saying that I think that for the purposes of this discussion, young adult should be thirteen to seventeen and not thirteen to eighteen. Because I think that that policy is inaccurate as written.
I mean, collection development is done based on, on appeal, it's not like a legal, you know, there's not something specific about turning eighteen that.
Well, you're legally an adult at eighteen.
But collection development is about the appeal of the book to the audience.
But what we're talking?
There's not like a seventeen, this would be appropriate, but eighteen, it's not for anybody younger than.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but it does make a difference because young adult material, I mean, for example, in this suggestion of a policy to protect kids from sexually explicit materials indicates minors. A minor legally is eighteen, is under eighteen. So to have young adult section outlined and defined as thirteen to eighteen is, is a crisscross. It should be thirteen to seventeen because seventeen is still considered a minor, eighteen is not.
I, I understand.
An adult collection is not a minor versus adult collection is for the appeal of thirteen to eighteen year olds.
Okay, well, that's fine, except that an eighteen year old's an adult. And that makes a difference because I don't think.
An adult is not a legal term, therefore it does not need to correspond to legality of thirteen to eighteen.
I'm saying that an eighteen year old, by all standards, is considered an adult. Therefore, a book, an eighteen year old goes in there, they can go to the adult section and pull out a book. If a child is a minor and their parent doesn't want them going to the adult section, then they should not be going to the adult section. There is a difference. An eighteen year old is an adult. An eighteen, no wait. Pardon me?
I said that would be up to the parent and to enforce that, it is not up to the library to enforce that.
That is correct, that is correct. But I don't believe that a book for an eighteen year old is not the same book for a thirteen year old. It shouldn't be, in my opinion, is, is a vastly different book.
What is the difference between a book for a seventeen year old and a book for an eighteen year old?
It's, it's the semantics of, it's the legality of it. Because if it came, if push came to shove, an eighteen year old's an adult, a seventeen year old's not.
Correct, but what is the law that defines that a seventeen year old cannot read an eighteen year old book? And what is an eighteen year old book versus seventeen year old?
The difference is the parents of a minor and the parents of an adult is what it is. That's the difference. A seventeen year old is a minor, an eighteen year old is an adult. That's the difference. And the parents should have the right to select with their seventeen year old.
They definitely do.
Right now, right now, in all nine of our branches, a parent has the right to choose material for their child based on these guidelines that you all have written here or any other ones that they find potentially harmful to their child. They get to make that decision.
They get to make that decision, however, in practice, does every parent read every book? I don't think so.
It's up to the parent's choice then.
That is the parent's, that is the parent's responsibility, that is correct. But also, there's always talk of that we have to hire and have experts in the field. And the experts should be helping the parents by informing them as to which books are put where. And I think that's a big difference. And I think that, that we have to help parents as much as we can.
Is helping parents with that?
Absolutely they are, but I think that we.
You actually asked staff to help you with that?
I think that we can go a step further and, and assist by placing books that have these criteria clearly in them, by placing them in an age appropriate section.
But you said an inaccessible section.
I said age appropriate, not inaccessible.
It says not accessible to minors.
Not accessible to minors by, by virtue of the fact that at some point, we would like to have a scenario where a parent will select which, where they can, their kids can select a book.
And how would the staff be monitoring that?
That would, that's a whole nother discussion. That's a whole nother discussion.
You can't, you've got to do them in, in tandem because you can't make these policies that we then aren't going to be able to implement because you don't have the staff in, nor our buildings can allow that to happen.
That is correct, and we will address that for sure, we will. Because we cannot implement a policy that the staff can enforce. That's, you're right.
One of the things that we had talked about, and again, it's, it has only been a discussion so far, but we had talked about the fact of adding to the library cards a place where children can gain access to the adult section if their parents are willing to put that on. You know, we'd have to, we'd have to set the library card up so that it had that access. In other words, they could pull a book, but if their parent has not given them the access to that, the adult section, then they can't check that book out.
What about the child reading the book in the library? Who would be producing that?
That would have to, that would have to be the parent. That, that is not something that we, that you would expect a librarian to be able to do. So I understand what you're saying, but it's, it's not something that a child could check out if, unless their parent had decided that they were allowed to check things out in the adult section. And again, that has only been a discussion, that's not, that's not in any policy at this point.
Mrs. Stoops, you were mentioning a section that you had a question on. Could you point out where that, that section was? You said something about making inaccessible?
Oh, I said in the, number two on, I guess, second page. It says that the materials, constitutionally protected materials of the type identified in paragraph one remain available to adults but must be made placed such that these materials are not accessible to minors.
Okay. So obviously, these pieces that are suggestions for how we can move forward would need to be placed in line with the policies that we have presently, which means that some things in those policies would need to be changed.
Do we have more comments, questions?
So my question is, why are we stuck on the number seventeen and eighteen? Why does the library have to define the sections according to that, those numbers? Why can't you define the young adult section to start at seventeen? What is preventing you as a library from doing that?
Mr. Dossen, please say.
Starting the collection, why would it be for seventeen year olds?
Right. What is the demarcation within the library system? What is creating you as the director and your staff, all right, for defining the library setup in that manner? Where is the law?
There is no law, but I think that, you know, widely practiced, common practice throughout the United States is
Okay.
a, a term developed to identify the audience that is, I'm gonna say it's more or less.
If we were to, if we were to change the operation of this library system to not adhere to that structure, what would that do to you as a organization?
I'm guessing that it would lower the service that we deliver to the citizens.
Can you explain that more in detail?
I think that, I think that it'll be harder for them to use the collection when there's, when there, when there's more friction there is in offering services to the citizens, the less likely that it happens.
But as Ms. Sloan was saying, if you're going to use the terms minor or an adult, they're legal terms.
That's correct, but I don't believe the current collection development policy utilizes the term minor.
That's in the two paragraphs.
The current audience's collection sections, however you wanna describe it, are meant as guidelines as we have provided in further documentation. They're meant as guidelines to assist readers find the materials that is most associated with them and appeals to them. It is not appropriateness.
If, if I could just add some line data for a little bit. The, the age level piece for all of this is, I'm gonna say it's difficult to address because chronological age doesn't necessarily correlate to one's reading level, one's maturity, one's interest. And, and the idea that these are, are broad guidelines is, is just, you know, very true. I'm, I'm old enough that there wasn't a young adult section. I, one of the, one of the stories that I told when I was being interviewed for this job was, you know, sort of the world that was opened up to me is like a, you know, maybe fifth or sixth grader in a small town. I was asking questions, looking for information. And, you know, I got the invite, the two story book on children's is on the, in the basement level. And upstairs was the adult. I'm like, well, you can go upstairs and use stuff there. It's like, really? You know, it was great. And in a more black and white world, but, you know, I think, you know, I was looking at things in, in popular mechanics or, you know, popular science and people, you know, people were got. My parents never had a problem, their kids went to the library. But we're also, we're dealing with different issues.
It's also a very litigious world, and that's where we are. And we're trying to get by in helping families use a system here without being, even making a system more available, all right? Some people don't want to come into a library because of a system that is not helping them, all right? And to, to change that in a way that is available to them, I mean, there's a lot of threats. Legal threats.
I think there are also legal implications for restricting access to materials.
So last year, we received, or the board received, a letter from Hanover County. And one of the things that Hanover County asked to see was that materials should be placed in the appropriate places in the library as determined by library-wide policy adopted by PRL board for the purpose of maintaining consistency across the branches. Age appropriateness of materials in section of the library should be considered. This is my attempt as a Hanover rep to address the issues brought to me by my board of supervisors. I am here as a representative of my community. I was here appointed by my board of supervisors. And this is the direction I would like to see PRL go. And we need to make it possible to go this direction. We should be able to, with definitions and criteria, determine what can be in the locations in the library for minor children. As this policy says, as an adult, you have the right to do whatever you want. But we need to ensure that these materials are not located in areas of the library for minors. So can this be tweaked? Obviously. Can we be more clear? Yes. But this is the way that I would like to go forward to address some of the issues. We have addressed very little in this letter from the Hanover Board of Supervisors. And we need to be. It's not a question of if, it's a question of how. We need to address it. I would like to add to that, that Barb and I were also contacted by two members of the Goochlin Board of Supervisors. And in no uncertain terms, they said, why is this stuff in our library? And why aren't you doing something to get it out?
So they weren't out of the library?
That's what they said. Out of the children's section. They're not, no book banning, no book burning.
First step there.
None of, none of that. They said, you know, out of the section of the library that the kids can get to, that the kids are, you know, not featured in the kids' section of the library, forgive my term. Move to an age appropriate section. The books have a right to be written, they have a right to be published, they have a right to be read. They have a right to be in the library. But help parents decide what is going on in this library, what is going on in these books. And help the parents, because they're getting a lot of flack, and then they're coming to us with what they're hearing. So, so I fully support protecting the minors against sexually explicit material. I, I don't understa, I just don't understand the, the mindset of, you know, I'm sure it's okay with some people, but I don't, I don't see why there's a big fight to allow kids to have access to this material. I don't get it. I just don't. I never will. Every parent should decide what their child reads. Every single parent has the right to do that. These books have a right.
These books have a right to be written, published, and purchased. I just, I, I am a mo-, I'm a mother, I'm a grandmother, and I believe that every parent should be given as much information they can get to protect their children from inappropriate material. Sexually explicit material, in this particular instance is what we're talking about. It's very simple. Don't have to make it more complicated than that. That is, that is why we, I mean, I support this completely.
Another point of a, you know, when Christie brought up the letter, another thing that was mentioned in that letter was to offer tools to parents so that they could determine which things they wanted their children to check out. And I know we've talked, we have Novelist. I have continued, I started a while back, and I have continued to do research on the different books, and I have yet to find any source that says what is in some of these books. I, you know, it will talk on, kind of on broad terms that they're, they're, I, I can't even, I can't remember how it's worded, but it's very nebulous, you know, that there's, might be some sex in the book or something. But it doesn't go into the level of information that is available in, in many of these books. So, the fact that Hanover has specifically asked us, I, again, our supervisors said the same thing, you know. We need to, we need to make sure that parents know how to go about getting information. And I, I've said this before, I'll say it again, as a parent, when my child was little, I could read every book that she was checking out. But when she got to be ten or eleven and was checking out ten books a week, and I was working full-time and my husband was working full-time, I didn't have time to read ten of her books and do what I needed to do beside that, you know, to, and read them in, in their entirety. So, I think that we're, we need to, we need to address the fact that, we need to help parents have ways that they can help protect their own children. And the idea, again, nothing that has been decided yet, but the idea of, of putting something on the library card that if these books that contain this kind of information are moved into the adult section, if a parent wants to check on that library card, my child has the permission to go into the adult section. They have the permission to go in the adult section, they can check those books out. But if the parent has not selected that, then they, they cannot check the book out. And you're right, they can read it in the library. I'm not, you know, there's no way of preventing that other than the parent preventing that. So, I, I also support this. I don't know, we have some other comments.
I believe if the parent is concerned with their kids are reading, they shouldn't let them go to the library.
Well, it doesn't, you know, you can be attentive.
If they want them to read something and they don't feel like they can give that direction to their child and have them follow it, then they need to be with their child when they go to the library.
And I always was. I, but again, I can't read ten books that she's checking out.
Because our staff certainly can't say, hey, Johnny, your mom doesn't want you reading that book, don't go read that book.
And we're not saying that.
We're not asking them to do that.
We're not asking that to be done.
We're not asking them to.
We're asking that they do.
To find every mention of penis, because that is what this proposal is indicating. There can't be a single mention of this unless it's in the adult section. The only way to do that is to review every book, and if there's a way to see it beforehand, then parents do have the tools available to them to determine for their children what they should be reading.
So, I mean, I've been hearing for months how easy it is with, within seconds for parents to receive information about what's inside of a book. So, I don't understand why it's difficult for library staff to receive that information.
You said we weren't helping parents, and you're saying it's easy for them to get. I'm not understanding the disconnect here.
No, what I'm saying is, I've listened.
You're saying it's difficult, but then you're saying it's easy.
No, 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 what I'm saying is, I've listened for months and heard from other people how easy it is for parents to get information. So, therefore, I interpret that it's easy for library staff to get that information too. You should be able to see, okay, does this book have any of these things in it? It should be easy. That's what I've been hearing, how easy it is for parents to get on the internet, and within a matter of seconds, they can get this information. So, therefore, when you're ordering, it should also be easy. Within a matter of seconds, you should be able to have this information. So, it's not a disconnect. I'm just, I'm just saying back to you what I've heard in these meetings for months.
The policy for protecting children is directing us to move these materials to a different area.
The policy for protecting children is that we do not purchase these materials for those areas. That's the policy.
So, it is, I mean, if you're not removing what has already been purchased, but you're
So.
Until you get a request for reconsideration, then you better move.
It's a different process, and this is why we've tried to, I've tried to do this in a legal way, right? So, the policy would be initially, we don't purchase these materials for minor sections of the library. That's the initial policy. What we do with the books that are already there that contain it, that's a different process. There's a difference between what comes into the library and what's already here and how we classify it.
How is that not censoring materials?
It's a very clear criteria.
And you said that materials will not, they need to be published, they're able to be written.
They should be read.
They're available in the, in the library, but now you're saying they're not, not to be available in the library.
No, they're not to be purchased for minor children's sections of the library.
I'm sorry, I thought you were going, not to be purchased. Period.
For minor children's sections of the library.
So, so we are, we are moving them to the adult section?
Then we're not purchasing, we're not purchasing them, period.
Correct.
We're not purchasing them.
For minor children's sections of the library.
No, we're to purchase materials that were written and for minor children, but we're to put them in the adult section because of the policy that you're saying, if it has sexually suggestive content.
Explicit.
Explicit content.
So, even though it's, it's written for a juvenile audience, it would need to be placed in the adult section. Is that what you're saying?
If you want to purchase material that has sexually explicit material in it as defined by these terms, it would need to be placed in the adult section of the library.
Which would also put a human anatomy of us through the children.
So, there is, uh, there is a section that talks about constitutionally protected material.
Of all constitutionally protected.
So, it says, it says there that they have, they can be placed and remain available to adults, but they should not be accessible to minors.
So, books written for children about human anatomy and the changes their bodies are going through by your policy would not be in the children's section?
Is it sexually explicit? Does it define this?
That's telling me about the changes my body is going through as I
If you, if you read, if you read about the changes your body's going through.
If you, if you look at these items one through six, clearly, that is not describing human a-, human anatomy and the growing body.
Orgasms and ejaculation don't describe human anatomy?
I don't know that that's what we were talking about right this second.
That's what it says.
Number four.
Okay, well, I, you got me there. I mean, human, okay, so, we're talking about a science book describing human anatomy versus sexual activity for minors.
I will tell you, I, I spent forty-five years in the education world. Fourteen to fifteen years of that specifically in the, in the elementary and middle school level classroom. And then, from that point on, working with teachers and administrators, and my field was science. This kind of information is not what is found in a science book that you would have in a, in a classroom. This, this is not in a health classroom, in a biology classroom. This kind of information.
But we're a public library, not a school library.
Yeah, but being a family life. So, it's okay for the, the children to, the, the other piece that I will say is maturity level of children, especially our younger children, to be reading this kind of, they're, they're not at that level.
That's when it's the rep-, parent's responsibility to determine what their child should read based on their maturity level.
Well, again, there's things that, that they can check out that are not going to necessarily be at their maturity level, but a parent is not going to know that unless they read the whole book. And if they don't have the time to read the whole book and they can't get a synopsis of that book that is someplace that will tell them that some of this information is in there, there, it just is, it's a vicious circle to say that, yes, it is the parent's responsibility, but you've got to have the tools available to the parents so that they can know that that book would have this, and they can make that decision. If they want to decide that their child reads a book that has this kind of information in it, that's their choice. But if they, a child checks a book out that has this kind of information in it, and the parent has no knowledge of it because nothing over here said it had it that in it, and that's where they could check, then how can that, how can, how can that end up being a tool for the parent and assisting the parent on what their child is going to read?
So, the suggested tool is we eliminate anything being in that section, which doesn't seem like much of a tool. And I politely disagree about health classes not having any of this kind of information. In my biology classes and health classes, we definitely did study sex.
Well, you do.
Education, what have you.
But not, okay, there's a difference between studying sex education and, and having three pages of somebody telling you to have, give someone a blowjob. I'm sorry, that, that, there's a very definite difference between that.
The description here does not identify that distinction.
Exactly. And so, we, we are specifically asking if you're saying nonfiction materials describing changes that a child's body goes through as they move from adolescence would not be acceptable because it would be discussing these biological changes.
I thank you, yeah, okay. I'm not.
Well, I mean, that is an interesting point in that if, if there should be a sec-, uh, maybe a notation about non, you know, nonfiction educational scientific material, I think we can all agree that is very different than what we're talking about in terms of sexually explicit material.
In our local paper, there was an article, and misinformation is definitely used because I went to our branch and said, has something changed? This is a children's book that is, what was juvenile, juvenile book, nonfiction. Is this in with all our juvenile books? No. They're like, nothing's changed. Juvenile nonfiction is in this section with the other nonfiction. You have your juvenile nonfiction, you had your adult nonfiction, you had, et cetera. So, that article was misleading to say that it was a juvenile book. I opened the book. On the title page, second page, whole page was a parental warning saying, this is a juvenile book, but to be used as a teaching tool. Parents beware of your child's maturity level. This is what you need to know. All you needed to do was open the book, and there it was. What you should use this book for.
And that was a human.
And it might not be appropriate for all kids.
It was an anatomy book?
Yeah, well, it was a sex education. Nothing dirty, as some of these books have been, nothing dirty about it. It was a, do you want an ignorant society? If you eliminate those books, to help.
I don't think this, I don't think that's the intent of this document.
But, but that is part of the misinformation that was published in our local paper.
What was the name of that book, Mary?
Sex is Not a Funny Word.
Sex is a Funny Word is the name of the book. Isn't it?
Sex is a Funny Word.
It is, it is, okay.
So, I'm, I, I've noted that, that there's a, a question about nonfictional education, educational scientific material.
I'm not super familiar with sex is a funny word, but I think that it probably doesn't fit most people's, um, image of a, of a textbook. You know, it's, it's, it's written
Yeah, I've actually read it.
For the juvenile.
Yeah.
Library accessible kind of perspective. That's, that's the, that is the challenge of the discussions we're having in, in making sure that, you know, things are being clearly defined.
Yep.
That we understand the places where there are subtleties in what we're dealing with. And I, I think, I, I guess I'm, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna ask you, caution you not to be for, to be framing library staff perspective as, this, some, some kind of interest in, um, books that have sexual content in. I don't believe that's the, the case. What I do believe is that we are hypersensitive in ways that you are not to the subtleties of, of what does become censorship. And we've had some, I'm gonna call them sort of slips of the tongue here that people are hearing that may not be what the person means. And that's why we're asking these questions. What, what are we trying to define here? Because I don't think in our litigious society that we want to be seen as censoring materials. I, I hear, I, I hear things that, I hear things of making sure what direction it's, I hear, we're not in the children's section. It's okay for them to be in the adult section. Here, go, not buy them at all, and those are different. So, I think we just, we, we all need to, um, be able, give each other a little grace as we're talking, to be able to ask for explanations. Make sh-, you know, make sure that we're listening, understanding each other so that we have a set of, of policies that will be workable for everyone in the community. And I think that is important. I understand there are people who are raising this concern, but I also know that there are people who are not raising the same concern, that seem to be finding information about materials. So, we got a lot of stuff going on here.
Let me just make a, a response to what you just said, just a point of clarity that, um, that Christie indicated several times to be not bought for the minor section. I think, you know, she didn't just say just not purchased, but not purchased for the minor section. And I said the word out, get the books out of there. I meant out of the children's section, and I want to clarify that so that nobody thinks a slip of the tongue is really like a nefarious, out of the children's section. And I think that one area that, why we are here having this discussion at all is that there is no tool available to any of us, aside from opening a book and reading it, to clearly state that this, a book contains sexually explicit material. Like Barb said earlier, she's tried with Novelist, with Goodreads. You go and you get these little blurbs about the book. What a parent will try to do to find out what these books are about. In some occasions, it'll indicate there's, you know, romantic involvement or, you know, something like that. But they do not prepare a person or warn them about sexually explicit material that's in books that are written and published. that's in books that are written and published and placed in the minor section. So, I think that we are all a little bit at a deficit because the industry does not provide us with easily accessible definitions. And I think that it's fair to ask ourselves, why do they not readily come out with that? It's because they don't want to. Because if people will not pick those books, parents will not buy those books if they readily know it's easily accessible online that the book that their kid wants to read, that their, you know, nine-year-old kid wants to read, has sexually explicit material in it. They won't do it. So, I worked in the publishing business for thirteen years. I know what a publisher will do or not do to sell a book. I, you know, it's, it's obvious, but I get it. So, all that to say that it's additionally harder for the parents to, to know. And we all agree that the parents should decide what a child should read. We all agree. We're just trying to give the parents more tools to have a better informed decision. We're not trying to censor, we're not trying to ban, we're not trying to do any of that. We're trying to help our patrons, our parents, decide what are the most appropriate books for their children to read. I, I think that's, you know, there's legal, you know, trying to get help from the legal department, trying to do just the right thing, and, you know, that's where we're at.
Any more comments? Yes?
Another question that I had was related to number three instructions. And I, I would appreciate having a better idea on what, what the instruction is in terms of how to, um, report to the library board regularly regarding the library's compliance with the policy. I'm not quite sure what that expectation is.
Any other questions, comments? I am looking at the time. It is twelve noon, and we can continue if you, if everyone here is comfortable with that. But I know that there were some people that said they have afternoon responsibilities, and I want to be mindful of that. I think we've had a good discussion. I think that we will block out time at our meeting in April that will be time to work on policies. We will try to make sure, it won't be three-hour section, but it, you know, make sure that we have some time to continue discussions, do any kind of revisions, and hopefully, what we can come back with, at least at the first two policies, is what we can vote on as a final product for those first two that we've reviewed. I think that we can, and then we will take the Friends, Friends of the Library's policy to our Friends groups. And I think we probably ought to look at May to, to discuss those because I know you said your meeting is later, later, it's like May tenth. And that would give everyone the opportunity to, you know, to really work with the Friends groups. And I think they ought to have input into what, what is in that policy. But we will continue this discussion then at our board meeting.
We would be continuing to have work sessions.
I think we need to continue to have work sessions. Probably every couple of months, we'll try to have a work session in the middle, just simply so that we've, we've got this kind of concentrated time to really delve into some of these. Some of them are not going to be as, now that we're starting to get a pattern, you know, as to the things that need to be changed. I think we're, I think we can move quicker with them.
And think of, and so, we appreciate having you scheduled by this month's discussion.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so, to recap, the Friends of the Library, we'll be discussing that at our May board meeting?
May board meeting. We'll do that at the May board meeting.
Okay. And then, every couple of months, we'll have workshops on the policies. And that calendar that I talked about, I will, I think I can now put together so that I can send it out. I've worked on it, but I, I, I kept thinking, I'm not sure this is the approach that we need to take. So, I can go ahead and finish that up so that we have a better idea of when those work sessions will be. Any other comments, questions? I think we are ready then. If I don't hear any opposing to that, I think we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting for today. Thank you.
Thank you.